All right, we'll bring this meeting to the one room. Uh, please, uh, run us through the, uh, please.
Pleased to be here to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this has been asked a few times, but I guess tonight's the first time we do it. Uh, from Beckley Presbyterian, we got Pastor Monte Mitchell, who will lead us in prayer. There he is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, this is Worthy and other city employees. I am the pastor of Beckley Presbyterian Church, where Anne is a member. And she was the very first person I ever talked to who's from Beckley, not just the city of Beckley, but from Beckley. It was evident to me how much she loves this city, so I very much appreciate her inviting me here on her last regularly scheduled meeting as the interim city manager. When she was appointed, we had a prayer for her, that she would, would, uh, be blessed with wisdom and, and service, and we trust that that prayer has come true her a number of times as the interim city manager. So, uh, we'll pray now again if she would. Would you join me in prayer for any questions? Well, God, we do thank you for all things. May your wisdom and spirit of love embrace, guide all who seek to lead. We thank you for the service of those who have worked to make the city a better place. We pray for those who will continue that legacy. And we acknowledge that all good things come from you. May our part in your world never be part of the problem, but provide help and solutions that serve others for all. We ask your blessing on this city, that it might flourish, that it might be a place where people are respected and supported and nurtured. We ask your blessing on each person here. Amen.
All right, first item on the agenda is reading approval of minutes for the November 12, 2024 Riddler Council meeting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or any questions? Can anyone in council? No? Okay, all in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed say nay. So moved, thank you, council. Uh, next item is receipt of bids for D.L.A.P. grant demolition, uh, demolition of 322 Neville Street and 324 Neville Street. So now I will unseal the bids. Is it for both properties or just the individual? No?
Should be for both.
So the first bid is from Aster Oilfield Services. And, uh, let's see what they got as the amount. Uh, it looks like for 322 Neville Street, it's forty-nine thousand, three fifty, and the same amount for 324, for a total of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And I'll pass this over to Jim. Just if you can have the air. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this one's from Empire Savage and Recycling, and they just put a total estimate of cost for both properties at eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Uh, this one's from Reclaim Company LLC, and it looks like the same thing, they just combined them together for a, a total amount of two-hundred-and-five-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. And a final bid. Uh, it's from Tom's Tear Down and Takeaway. Um, he put each one at forty-two thousand, five hundred apiece for a total amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Again, that's Tom's Tear Down and Takeaway. So I'll pass this one on. Uh, again, these bids will be reviewed by Chief, Chief Code Enforcement Officer Captain Morgan, two council members at large, interim recorder, treasurer, and that'll be awarded at future date. So, moving on to the next item, second reading and public hearing of ordinance authorizing city of Beckley to accept donation of real estate located in the city identified as survey lot one, block twenty, Beckley Court Edition. Uh, Mr. File, you talked about this briefly last city council meeting, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, uh, basically, this is just a donation of a small lot. It's described as surface of lot one, block twenty, Beckley Court Edition, and it is from, um, Ms. Dilly, Jennifer Stump Dilly. Uh, this property is adjacent to other property the city of Beckley owns, and it's also adjacent to the basketball court out there, uh, off of Antonia. And so, at this time, I will, uh, read the ordinance by title and then, uh, open a public hearing to see if anybody has any comments. This ordinance is titled, "Ordinance Authorizing the City of Beckley to Accept the Donation of a Parcel of Real Estate Located Off Antonio Avenue in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia." And at this time, I will ask, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone has any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance. Appearing to be no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor?
Okay, very good. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Uh, anyone opposed say nay? Okay, thank you, council. Next up, uh, second reading and public hearing of ordinance authorizing city to enter into Pinecrest Property Agreement with Raleigh County Commission, Title Agreement for Transfer of Real Property Interest. Uh, again, I'll turn it over to Mr. File for more information on it.
Thank you, yes, tonight is also the second reading of this ordinance. Uh, this ordinance was approved two weeks earlier on first reading, and this is regarding the, the property that's, uh, out at Pinecrest Industrial Park. And this is the agreement of the term, or the, between the city of Beckley and the county commission on the terms of the transfer. The city has already agreed to transfer the property, uh, but this is setting forth an agreement. Council has had for, uh, at least a couple of weeks, the agreement to, to review. Um, the county commission has approved this, and this will be the city's second, uh, reading, and if approved tonight, the city will be in position to enter into this agreement with the county commission. Uh, this, uh, ordinance is titled, "Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Enter Into Agreement with Raleigh County Commission Regarding Terms of Transfer of Pinecrest Property." And I will open a public hearing at this time and ask if anyone has comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance. Yes?
I think there's a lot to be learned about this transfer of the Pinecrest property. Um, one being that transparency needs to be number one in any processes concerning what we do with our property and with our money, with our contracts. And I would hope that this council would continue to implement things that would make these processes more transparent to the public. And it would definitely be appreciated because then we can participate. And that's what democracy is about, is participating in local and federal government. Second of all, I hope that the county commission will consider doing something for these track and field students that have come and spoke and literally begged, um, for our place at this property.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments they would like to make, either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Appearing to be none, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor?
Uh, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second? Is there any questions or comments from the city council?
I do have a comment, mayor.
Okay.
I want to thank the students, the coaches, the community. Thank you for writing letters, um, advocating for the preservation of the most unique cross-country course in West Virginia. I'm proud of the students' perseverance. They saw civics in action. I would bet that someday, those students who spoke so eloquently will be on a ballot someday to be a part of their community governance. We gave it our best shot. I'm proud of them. It didn't go as we expected. Uh, I'm hopeful, I'm cautiously optimistic that the county commission will understand the importance of the cross-country course. Um, thank you for those that took the time to come and speak. We heard from you. Thank you to the four hundred people who signed the petition wanting to preserve the cross-country course. And I want to make it clear that my advocacy for the preservation of the course was because I felt that that was the right thing to do. And it just is a coincidence that the coach, happens to be, my first cousin once removed. Yes, my name is Sherry Barbera Hunter. I'm proud to be a Barbera. I've been a hunter for almost forty-five years, though, but thank you for everyone that advocated for the team and for the course. I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed say nay?
Nay.
So moved, thank you, council. All right, moving on, public hearing of adoption of resolution authorizing city of Beckley to lease real estate identified as 213 South Canal Street, Beckley, West Virginia, to Piney Creek Watershed Association. Uh, again, I'll turn it over to Mr. File.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, yes, tonight is, um, the only reading we will have of this resolution. Uh, what this does is this will authorize the city of Beckley to enter into a lease with the Piney Creek Watershed Association. They are a not-for-profit corporation here in West Virginia, and they have asked if they could lease the second floor of what basically was the old fire station, um, on South Canal Street. The address is 213 South Canal Street. The terms of the lease would be one dollar a month, and, uh, that basically is what, what it amounts to. It's a property that hasn't been used, um, for some time, and, uh, we are entitled to do this through a resolution because, um, we have adopted, um, a, a prior ordinance that authorizes us to lease property to not-for-profits for reduced rates, and we are, uh, entitled to do that for one dollar to this, uh, to this not-for-profit. So, um, that, that is what the resolution is. There's a lease attached to the resolution. I don't know that it's necessary. I'll read the primary part of this resolution. It just says, "Now, be it hereby resolved by the common council, the city of Beckley, that the city is authorized to enter into the attached lease identified as Exhibit One, in which the city has lessor leases to Piney Creek Watershed Association, Inc., a West Virginian nonprofit corporation, less E. The second floor property identified as 213 South Canal Street, Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, for the term of one year at the monthly rent of one dollar, and for other terms and conditions that are set forth in the lease." Mayor, I'll pass that on. Well, first, what we need to have is a public hearing on this, and I will open a public hearing and see if anybody has any comments or questions or wants to discuss. Yes?
I'd like to make these statements again.
Please do. And please identify yourself.
Hello, uh, my name is Nate Sidner, um, the executive director of the Piney Creek Watershed Association, uh, with also our board members Gary Moorefield and Tom Lunkie, uh, and previous executive directors Daniels Stewart and Jim Fetters, um, all of whom over the last twenty years have been instrumental in the success of our organization. Um, we're pleased to be here, we're very much looking forward to this opportunity to take over this space. Um, I love that building, it's got a little bit of a Ghostbusters feel in there. Um, uh, Gary has been in trail, and the, the trail going out is why I put the pond on, uh, why I'm saying the word of all fields out there, and he works out of that building as well. Um, and we've been longtime partners with the city of Beckley, West Virginia University Tech, uh, Raleigh County Commission, the Health Department, the VSB, and so being able to have an office centrally located to all of those partners will help us collaborate in a variety of ways. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that either the community at large or the council members have, uh, but I'd like to take just a minute to highlight a few of our recent, uh, projects that we're proud of. Um, over at Woodrow Wilson High School right now, uh, we're about to start breaking ground on the second phase of that project. If y'all remember, there used to be that pond out front, uh, which we successfully were able to get cranked on, able to turn into, uh, a wet, uh, wetland so that that, uh, water is clean and also doesn't, uh, I know that, this was before my time at the high school, it was basically a problem with the population there, I believe. Um, and now, uh, in the second phase of that is, uh, we just opened successful bids last week, uh, to get contract on board to build a boardwalk into that wetland so that the students at Woodrow Wilson can have more access into that wetland, and then develop more educational opportunities for them to kind of engage in that project, what projects like that are about and how they affect our mission, which is essentially to protect and preserve the water following within the Piney Creek Watershed. Um, some of y'all might have seen the stormwater detention pond is being built over at the convention center, in between the convention center and the living fields. Um, that project is nearing completion as well, we've got sort of a valve in there, um, and what that's going to do is essentially, um, hold back the floodwaters that flood the ball fields and the adjacent neighborhoods, um, that come off the, the parking lot from the, uh, the convention center there. Uh, we've built several other stormwater detention ponds over the, uh, or rain gardens, we have to call them, over at the BAF, uh, overall, uh, Canal Street in there as well. Uh, the first phase of the convention center is that, uh, upfront water retention garden there. Uh, we've got multiple other programs throughout the region, one that I'm particularly proud of, uh, is our wastewater improvement project in the, you know, kind of Highlands, kind of the, the headwaters up there, where we're, uh, putting a bunch of grant money, uh, into subject remediation, whether it's pumping or replacing or installing such two tanks. Um, we have trap classing programs, uh, now a new one at Colsey Elementary, uh, Daniels, and also at Woodrow Wilson. Um, and so, uh, we've got a variety of different ways that we kind of attack this mission. Uh, and another thing we're particularly proud of is we recently submitted a grant project with West Virginia University Tech, one of their biology professors, to remediate two different, uh, lots that they possess, one which is just right now here, uh, immediately adjacent to South Kamawa, across the street from their biology building. So we should hear back from them, uh, by the end of this month. If that comes through, then we'll be in lockstep with WDU Tech for the next two years. Uh, we've also got them and their biology department and their students, uh, committed volunteering to our water monitoring program, which serves about two dozen different sites throughout the Piney Creek Watershed all over the city of Beckley and, and some different environments where we do quarterly water monitoring, uh, to keep track of what's going on in the watersheds. Um, and that's just a few of the highlights. We've got a few other programs in the past that have been completed successfully, like Crescent Elementary School, we did a stormwater detention pond there. So, all that being said, uh, that's why, you know, uh, it would be proud to take this space and, and, uh, you know, it has been, as was mentioned before, kind of sitting there vacant for quite some time without myself and Jim, would like to be taking over some office space in there and be really excited to bring that building back to life a little bit. Um, and that's about all I can think of. If anybody has any questions or comments, of course, I'm happy to answer any at the moment, or of course, you know, we're easy to find, online, you know, contact information, we're, we're happy to engage with any community members on any level.
Good job.
Yes, ma'am? That's a good question. I think that the main thing is once that pond was drained, and then the wetland grasses and weeds were put in there, they just don't have space anymore. Kind of, I don't know where they went, who knows? They might be over, you know, a grandy somewhere, or over Little Beaver, they might just be relocated locally, but they're not there anymore.
Thank you. Good job, ma'am.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any other questions, uh, or would like to make any comments regarding this resolution? Yes?
Christina Basin, I, I just would like a copy of this lease if one is available. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the mayor.
Mayor? All right, very good, thank you, Mr. File. Um, with that, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye? Uh, all those opposed say nay? Okay, so moved, thank you, council. Moving on to number seven, resolution for a one-time pay supplement for all full-time city employees. Uh, this would take effect, uh, twelve, six, twenty-four, and at this point, I'll turn it over for a little bit more to Jessica.
Sure. Apparently, we have, um, two-hundred-and-fifty-four employees that are full-time, and, um, this, um, pay supplement is already budgeted in for this budget year. Um, it would be around about two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars taxes in all.
Anybody got any questions?
So is that the same amount possible for everybody?
Yes, it's the same amount as last year.
And how much does that break down to per person?
Eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a person.
That's full-time, what about part-time?
Historically haven't done anything for them.
All right, very good. Uh, may I have a, uh, motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second? Okay. Any other discussion, debate? Okay, great. All in favor say aye? Uh, those opposed say nay? So moved, thank you, council. Uh, next up is re- reappointment of Dr. Kurt Roberts to the Beckley Building Commission, uh, and this term would expire on twelve, thirty-one, two thousand twenty-eight. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Dr. Kurt Roberts to the Beckley Building Commission?
So moved.
Is there any questions or comments from any of you in council? Okay, great, all those in favor say aye? Uh, those opposed say nay? Okay, so moved, thank you, council. Next up is reappointment of Sandy Sheetsley to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and this term would expire six, thirty, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Sandra Sheetsley to the Beckley Board of Zoning Appeals?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any questions or comments from any of you in council? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Uh, anyone opposed say nay? So moved, thank you, council. Next up is the appointment of the Beckley City Manager to the Fay of Raleigh Metropolitan Planning Organization Board of Directors. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of the city manager to the Board of Directors for the Raleigh Fay MPO?
So moved, second.
Anybody have any questions about it? Okay, great, all those in favor say aye? Uh, all those opposed say nay? So moved, thank you, council. Next up is appointment of Ann Haley Donigan to the Beckley Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. This term would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of Ann Haley Donigan? Any questions or comments from any of you in council? All those in favor say aye? Uh, those opposed say nay? Great, thank you, council. Next is appointment of, uh, Matt Morris to the Beckley Planning Commission. This term would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. May I have a motion to appoint Matt Morris to the Beckley Planning Commission?
So moved.
Any questions, comments from Matt Morris? Great, all those in favor say aye? Uh, those opposed say nay? So moved, thank you, council. Uh, next item on the agenda is old business. Um, does anyone from council have any old business?
I kind of do. It's, it goes back to the, I don't know if it's in our old business or new business, about Piney Creek Watershed. I mean, I was there when they started, I mean, it's good to see Danielle here and Mr. Fetters. I was with the Chamber of Commerce for years. But back to the lease, who would pay the utilities on that?
The city is going to be responsible for the utilities.
Okay.
Any other council members standing?
I, I would just like to, um, recognize this lady in the back. She has given some tickets, uh, to the Nutcracker, to our new city manager, and to our mayor, and she is with the Beckley Dance Theater and Beckley Performing Arts. Would you like to say anything?
Just, I hope that you have come on the weekend with a six, uh, and a, that you might come and see the annual tradition that Beckley has in this neighborhood. It's magical, there is so much left to count, and of course, the music of Christ has to be as ever. So.
Man, it kind of puts you in the Christmas spirit, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, so I met with Jerry Rose, uh, last week, and I asked him, I said, "Are you ever going to retire?" And he said, "When I'm dead." But, uh, he told me this is the thirty-fourth year that he's ran, and that's, that's pretty impressive, so I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the tickets. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? Old business?
May I ask a question about those? How much are the tickets? The tickets, um, they, last year they were fifteen, but this year they raise a thousand dollars, so it's twenty dollars. And you're welcome. And I think if the child is of the age that has stood on your life, you're not going to regret this. You're welcome.
Nothing else? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Uh, anybody from council having new business?
Mayor has some. Michael Wolin, Board of Public Works has worked so hard picking up leads and bringing them to the Solwaste Authority, and I want to thank the employees, they've worked diligently. Thank you so much. And Chief, congratulations on the new officers that just started with Beckley PD. Congratulations to them. You're welcome. And we also want to always thank Mr. Epling. The, tomorrow is Mountaineer Food Bank's mobile food pantry for the general public. The truck arrives at ten o'clock, food distribution is from eleven till about twelve-thirty, and I want to thank everybody that's ever come to, to, uh, to help with the distribution. Tomorrow will be the last one for twenty twenty-four, so we expect to have a, a lot of people there. And Mountaineer Food Bank says this all the time, that they wish they could have a parking lot like yours at other locations all over the state, so, um, thank you, council members that have always helped with Mountaineer Food Bank, so tomorrow is that mobile. And always remember, the second Friday of every month is the Veterans Table Mobile Pantry, the second Friday of every month for the veterans. Thank you, mayor.
I think Councilwoman, oh, my secretary. Councilwoman Hunter, um, asked for volunteers, and anybody here has a free hand tomorrow? We could use more help. How many did we do at Veterans Table, like, three hundred?
Three hundred and seventy-five, three hundred and seventy-five.
So we can use more hands if you're available tomorrow. Uh, distribution starts at eleven, I'll be there.
Ten o'clock, the truck arrives from Braxton County at ten AM. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else have anything?
I just, uh, one thing that I've seen that I think Jill had sent it out on December third, next Tuesday, at five fifteen, we're doing a big, uh, I think it's the first time we've done it, I believe, it's a, yeah, it's the first time since I've been on council. It's a Christmas lighting ceremony at Word Park, and I think that's just, that's something I would really like to see our Christmas stuff grow, decorations and stuff downtown.
Next Tuesday, correct?
I just think, you know, having, just being a kid driving through town, seeing the lights and the trees and stuff, and that, having the big lighting on, uh, Tuesday, I think's, uh, going to be really awesome for the community, and, uh, if you haven't heard about it, now you have, uh, it should be a good time, I believe, next, uh, Tuesday at five fifteen it starts. And then I also want to say, uh, uh, I was really happy the way meetings started this time for prayer, that's something I personally have asked for since I've been on council to bring it back, and I think that was a good way to start our, uh, meetings, getting, you know, the, the faith communities within, you know, council working together, and, uh, it just, you know, it's a good fresh start to it, and, um, looking forward to, uh, our new city manager's start, and it seems like it's been, well, I guess, over a year of wait, so I think we're going on the uphill slope finally, and we're ready to start rocking and rolling.
Very good. Yeah, Jill, I was going to call on you because it's such a busy schedule for Beckley events, and I was going to see if you wanted to talk about the Christmas lighting at Word Park and what else is going on.
I'd like to thank Public Works and Harts and Rec for, uh, doing all of this, the decorations. Thanks to, um, Public Works and Harts and Rec for all, putting all the decorations up. If you have, you have to go down to the exhibition, Cole Mine, unless it might here tonight, but be sure to go down there this weekend or the first weekend in December, um, the Apalachic Hotel Christmas. Um, the Apalachic Hotel Christmas will be fabulous, they've got the ice skating room there already. Um, as you mentioned, uh, next Tuesday, we're gonna do a tree lighting ceremony, do something brief, I don't know if it's gonna be cold, but it's like five-thirty. And then they'll run, let the switch, light the tree up.
Practice first, you don't wanna grizzle.
I don't wanna grizzle.
You take the culinary program, it's gonna give away some hot chocolate. Um, Captain Liz and Salvation Army's gonna lead some caroling, and then if you wanna go in and, and see the beautiful decorations at First Baptist Church right there across the street, um, that'll be a, a, a free tour of that. Um, and then, of course, the Christmas parade is that Saturday, December seventh, eleven a.m. Um, getting a lot of entries in on that, and so there's so much going on, you just follow our pages.
Thank you, Jill, thank you. Uh, one other thing that came, uh, that we noticed is the second city council meeting date is act, would actually be on Christmas Eve. So, Mr. Fow, I was gonna ask you if it's, is, is it okay to, I mean, if you're...
Why don't you hear Christmas Eve?
I'm making a motion.
Is it okay to take a vote to, to cancel that one?
Absolutely. I think an action, this, this announcement's canceled. Somebody ejected.
Alright, there we go, it's canceled. They're off the hook, they're a family. Go ahead.
If, if anyone missed Wonderland of Trees this year, you missed something spectacular. Interim City Manager Ann Worley was there. There was a bidding war for the first tree, and it went back and forth and back and forth, and the tree was donated by Terri Skeens and her family, and it, it was embellished with her mother's ornaments from Gone with the Wind. The tree went for four thousand dollars, four thousand dollars. But that wasn't the only bidding war. Uh, there were bidding wars with, uh, Richard Gerald and his good friend Alan Lett, Dr. Stewart, Dr. Copenhagen. Uh, but at the end of the day, I wanna tell you, Jeremiah Johnson and what he does for our city, he's a rock star. The tree was unbelievable. Black Knight Municipal Park looks unbelievable. Santa is actually, let me slay, I mean, Santa's arrived in Beckley already. Um, and due to, uh, you know, there are forty-four nonprofits under the umbrella of the United Way, and our good friend Trina Diesel, the executive director, and Lori Cuthbert, they work so hard. But the community comes together, and they come together, and guess what? They surpassed the goal last year. So all of those forty-four nonprofits are going to reap the benefits, so thank you, City Beckley, thank you, Jeremiah Johnson. It was a wonderful, it was a magical evening, November twenty-second.
No, that was good, it, it was impressive, we got to go out there, I think they had forty-one trees, so, yeah. Uh, anyone else from council? Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Uh, just remember when you come up, state your name or address, keep it to three minutes, Jessica will call you out if you don't. Um, just be, well, I'll call you out, but still let me know when this thirty seconds runs, but, uh, you know, just, I think the last seat council, it was such, it just seemed like it was such a positive attitude, and, and the people didn't even spoke, it, it, it was, it was almost refreshing to hear how positive things were, but. With that, I'll, I'll ask Mary West to come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mary.
How are you all?
Good.
Everybody seems like they are in the spirit of heaven. Please give us some speed bumps. I'm having to call down town and get somebody there. And Chief, do your cars have radars in them, 'cause apparently they don't. They start up at the Ruin Hill Heart, and they fly down to the roof right by my house, and then they stop by the time they hit the road, they get your cars to sit there. So something definitely need to happen. There has been speed bumps there before. So what would make it so hard to have them there again? Every time I get ready to back into my driveway, these idiots are flying off the hill. Sunday, I backed into my daggone garage. Because they was coming so fast, and I was trying to get away from them. So, you know, please help me down there on the Ruin Avenue. I have come here so much begging, till I don't know. And I've been treated like a redheaded stepchild, just 'cause I died red, and nobody knows my stepchild. So please help me. 'Cause see, if I was down there, half the speed bumps donated, what would have ruined? But, of course, previous administration wouldn't even have put them in. Now, somebody, please tell me, why is that so important, not to have something down there for the safety of people? If you asked his officer that was down there today, uh, young lady almost got hit while her doctor's appointment was over. And she had to jump over into somebody's grass. That's not fair to the citizens. I pay taxes just like everybody else. They adds up, and still looks the same way. So can I get some help, please? And I would appreciate it. And Chief, go to track and get my sign and put it back, because I'm paying you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mary West. Uh, next up is Gary Bowlen.
I'm here, you're welcome. Good evening, everyone, I was born in Beckley Hospital, which is no longer there. And I'm very proud to live in the city of Beckley. Thanks to y'all, I appreciate it. Hope y'all do a right good job. It's a good, clean city, but it's, I'm proud of it. Uh, I've been working really hard on these bicycles, and I've got some good news for you tonight. But I wanna let you know that today, at eight seventy-four, I finally get the middle age, 'cause I was just too young to worry about it, and too old to care. I'm a little bit worn out, but I did get a lot of good work done. I wanna try to explain to you a little bit what I'm doing. I'm working on bicycles from giddy-diddy, and today I got a bicycle that's twenty-nine inches high. And it's even got those different high bars on it, like this, built for big old guys. Now, if I, y'all got to remember that I've got bicycles from giddy-diddy, I started with all the different parts on it, uh, that's, uh, wheels, that's a wheel, uh, you're rimmed, you're tired, there are, uh, uh, tubes that go inside of it, and they're all different sizes, so I have to have parts for all of that. And it's the handlebars, grips, the pedals, the brakes, the seats, the cables, the gears. I've got plenty of oil and grease. I gotta have all that around, as well as the different tools and the sizes and everything around. So it's not just standing there with a bike stand, with a bicycle up there, just pulling around. I'm moving, I got lots of room, I, I need to work out just for one real bicycle. But the good news is, I've got twenty-eight bicycles that I gave out to Salvation Army and April Seagull. It was fact, it didn't take a whole lot to do, so thank y'all that you're gonna bring twenty-eight smiles to my life. Uh, this coming Tuesday, we're gonna be a, a facility down here, got six children. So on Monday, I'm delivering six bicycles down to the DA.
Thirty seconds.
We got three bicycles, adult bicycles, that we've got for three veterans homeless, that were homeless veterans that stopped jobs, so now we're gonna be able to pr- to provide transportation for these three homeless veterans who'll be able to get work done. I got twenty-one bicycles that we're going to be able to give out before Christmas, uh, for Raleigh County and Fayette County. We got, uh, five bicycles set up for St. Stevens, for their program down St., St. Stevens. And, uh, and as, as long as dogs give me the ability to put one foot in front of the other, I'll be there for them, or still work on the bicycle. Now, for the bad news, I need to get a thousand.
Thank you, Gary, it's three minutes. Sorry. I hate to cut you off at that point, but, yeah, we gotta keep it in three minutes.
I think I left about a minute or so on mine.
Uh, we gotta move on, but Gary, I appreciate you, I appreciate you being here, that is good news. You can, you can talk some bad news after.
Can I ask, Mr. Bowlen, where are you working out of that?
St. Stevens, uh, just a little church.
Okay, that might be in a little early tomorrow, and I'll talk to that person. I know that's all about the space.
Hey, Gary, talk to us after the talk. Uh, next up, Debbie Carter.
My name is Debbie Carter, and I'm a resident of Chief Street. I just wanted to let the council know that thank you very much for paving, it was done today. Done in a very timely manner, it was fantastic. The resident I'm in, I've been there for forty years, my parents were there, and it's been a long time since the street was paved. And they did part of it, but they're in school. When it's finished, they came today, they did it, they did it in a timely manner. I want to thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Uh, Danielle Stewart?
Thank you all, well, I want to speak today first, uh, I wanna say, uh, thank you for the support from Piney Creek Watershed Association now and in the past. Uh, this has been a long time coming, it's such a great thing. And it's not just the facility rent, uh, it's also the fact that they could use that as matching funds in order to get additional rents. And nonprofits will tell you those matching funds are a part of really, really hard. Uh, on to some other things, I wanna thank you all in that transfer agreement for taking care of the kids, it was really, I'm sorry, the Little League kids. Because as you notice, the Little League have been operating there for years and years, I mean, I played there when I was eighteen, without a lease, but they got taken care of. Uh, just wanna point out that the board of directors included, uh, Mr. William, William Fowle III, I think that's our city attorney. So it's good to know those kids got taken care of, I just wish I could take care of the other kids. Uh, did have a question also on that transfer agreement, one of the things that I've noticed is that in the new agreement, there's no outline about who composes the Pine Crest Architectural Review Committee. But there is a line in there that says, "Things from the past will continue to be honored," meaning that, the way I read that, city has to appoint two city council members to serve on the Pine Crest, uh, architectural committee. Really interesting, too, because there's no one accounting on that committee. I wonder if that was an oversight, but, you know, one of the things that I asked you all to do, so I would assume that it was done, done on purpose, to make sure the city still had a voice in reviewing all the stuff going in to there. Uh, lastly, my road's all torn up, glad afternoon, uh, and I'm not here to complain about it, I'm here to say, yes, finally. Look at Mountaineer Gas is there, they are putting in new gas lines. On the flip side of that, the sanitary board has been there three times as well, fixing their sanitary, the sewer lines that gas companies keep breaking as they're doing that. Uh, but it goes back to something that I've talked to you all about before, and that is the need for the city to have an infrastructure development committee, somebody that can coordinate the effort, and imagine how much better it would have been if the water company, and the gas company, and the sewer company all got together and just upgraded the whole neighborhood. If we're able to dig it up, it would make a whole lot more sense that it would have been coordinated to take care of everybody at one time, and really set that neighborhood up for the next fifty years.
Thirty seconds.
Instead, you know, five years from now, the sewer company will probably come in and tear it up, and five years after that, it'll be the water company. Uh, so I encourage y'all seriously to create this infrastructure committee, so that you all can work with all of these organizations, going with a plan for improving their infrastructure. Thank you. Thank you, Danielle.
Tom Mersch.
David? I think I have enough questions to go around for everybody. I know we, uh, talked a lot about safety committee, and this is some great ideas, um, called practical, and originated in Europe. It's the way we're making this area, there's a lot of things here that, like, uh, we've got, uh, rumble strips, okay? There's raised humps in certain areas that's slow traffic down, different median places. 'Cause people don't read, okay? People don't read, big little signs, they don't have insurance, we have families and children out there during the day and night. So these are some ideas, we haven't upgraded our streets per se in the last twenty, thirty years. So if we can implement some of these ideas and start putting them into place, we can stop some of the traffic, we can get a safer city, and we can all be a lot better off for it. So if you guys would review this at your leisure, and look at it, and see what you think, I think this is some wonderful ideas in there.
Thank you, y'all.
Alright, thank you.
Um, last up, Aretha Van Horn?
Yeah, I'm Aretha Van Horn, and I live over on, um, Ruin Avenue as well, and after this gentleman spoke, I almost feel like I don't need to say anything else, because I was just wanting to ask, um, I know there are petitions, and I know either we could petition for maybe another electric sign on the street. Like I said, I know those signs kind of catch your attention, um, I don't know if it costs too much or whatever, and also, the strips, um, would be nice to, either the, the bumps in the road or the rumble strips, I don't know. And I know emergency vehicles may have to cross through there, so I don't know what the reason is. And then I was gonna say, if we have to do a petition, is there a magic number that petitions are or are not accepted, so that we don't s- spin our wheels doing something that is not going to be effective or efficient anyway? And, and so, and, and I'm just asking, like, is there, or do you just do petitions and hope for the best? And I'm not trying to be...
No, no, I get that, 'cause Mary West and I talked about that, uh, if you was, ask your neighbors, like, what percentage of your neighbors would actually want speed bumps on their street? I know people fly down my street, too, but that's the last thing in the world, I would want the speed bumps on my road, but that's just me, I don't know how.
It may be low rate, it doesn't have to be one that tears your vehicle apart.
But I'd say it wouldn't hurt if you talked to your neighbors, and asked them if they would have wanted that, and if, yes, you take that in.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, did you have any...
I've got a petition, I have a petition.
Do you still have that, those signature's attorney file?
Should have.
Which, I'm sorry, which?
The petition that Mary West had turned in, I don't know exactly when it was.
It's, it was, uh, which is funny, whatever. It definitely, I've been here so many times until I don't remember, but I still have a petition there, at least, I've seen one for fifteen mile an hour and all of that. And I still have all of those sections, and I gave every one of you all, so, Mr. Fow, you don't have them?
Well, I'm, I'm sure I do, I have, looked at it for a while.
Okay, well, please look for them.
I will.
And I think I still have my copy, too, so.
Okay. And if we need to do that again, I mean, I, you know, we can do that, just something to keep it, it would be safer, and it's through all of that, when I see it in all of different communities.
Oh, yeah.
So, but that was just all that, this gentleman's information seems to be pretty effective and efficient. And that's all I can say.
I don't know, we got market wastage and stuff like that.
Uh, thank you, by the way, I didn't know you were gonna finish.
For, for how long is it, we're, we're carrying out, what is your capital?
Mr. Fow, um, our, our speed bumps themselves are, isn't the problem that those are an insurance law?
There, there's a safety issue that's one of the main reasons, uh, that the city's been hesitant to implement speed bumps.
But here are now those, like, rubberized rumble strips, I have no idea how costly that would be, I'm sure it's not cheap, but there's so many things that could be done to calm traffic, you know, um, narrowing streets. That's what part of this is about.
Yes, there were speed bumps there before, there wasn't a liability, and to you all that did that, like, yeah, I had to make it a speed, uh, road. That's when it changed, took out the speed bumps, that's why we brought my home, so please.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Rosario's gonna have some good thoughts on this, we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to him coming in and giving his opinion on it.
Okay, so next up, may I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Executive, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say nay? Alright.